Of the Planning Commission. Just a short reminder to everybody, if you've got a cellphone, please put it on, turn it off or put it on vibrate or something. We don't, we'd like to not be interrupted any more than absolutely necessary with cellphones. Okay, first order of business, approval of the minutes from our last meeting on June the 12th, work session and regular meeting.
I approve.
Got a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
One correction.
Yes, sir.
I was not a member of the commission on January 29th, so I can't really approve those amendments.
Okay. Well, these are, we're approving the minutes of June 12th.
Oh, I'm sorry.
June 12th, 2018.
I'm sorry.
And you were a member then?
My mistake, my mistake.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of approving the minutes? Raise your hand, opposed, no, okay, minutes are now approved. Okay, there's no old business, new business. We have a withdrawn application number 18-20015, annexation request has been withdrawn. 3B, application number 18-20016, annexation request on 784 Henry Street by Michael and Felicia McAlpin. Anybody here to speak in favor of this annexation request? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, in reference to application 18-20016, an annexation request on tax parcel 122-05-22-010, would recommend that, we would recommend this favorably to City Council. It is consistent with our comprehensive plan.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approval of the application, raise your hand, pose like sign. Okay, the application is B, 3B is approved. Okay, 3C, application number 18-60008, rezoning and 18-22004, concept plan on Whiskey Road is that item, do we have anybody who wants to speak on behalf of this, of these requests to rezone and the concept plan approval? Yes, sir?
Want me to come up there?
Yes, sir, if you wouldn't mind, come right here and state your name and your business and et cetera.
Okay, my name is Joseph Galino, I'm Vice President of Land Development for Bill Beasley Homes, who's the owner of the property. We're proposing, there we go, we're proposing a townhouse development. We've worked with the planning department on this, and this is our concept plan. What we're proposing to do is to come off Whiskey Road with an entrance, kind of, I can't come to it, but coming off a median, that's in, and that will follow the requirements of Aitken City's landscape medians and sign and everything, that source. We will open up until green space that's right in front of it. That will probably be like a landscape park, it's not going to have baseball fields or soccer fields or anything, it's going to be more people can go and maybe have a picnic, toss a ball around, but nothing that'll be defined in terms of sports type of field. Excuse me, we, in front of the, the park, there's three two-story townhouse units. We have a main road that'll circle the area, and off of that main road, we have individual little driveways. Each townhouse will have rear entry access, in other words, they come in from behind the house, not in front, as a conventional townhouse or single-family home will be. The townhouses are facing each other, so their front doors will face another front door across about a 25-foot courtyard. What we're hoping to create is what they call a cluster-type neighborhood, or create interactivity between the residents that live there. You come out your front door, your neighbor comes out, you have areas where you can gather and sit and walk the, walk the neighborhood. All of it will be interconnected by sidewalks, so in other words, you can come from the bottom units down there, all the way to the top without ever going on a road, you just follow the sidewalk up. Now, we do show the sidewalks as straight, we'll probably meander them a little bit, make, give them a little bit more interest. Unfortunately, an engineering-type drawing, they, they don't have that ability to do it the way I would want. We propose about a one-third mile walking area above it where the pond is. That pond has not been designed yet, we are working on that design. It may be a little bit smaller, we're going to make it work. What we would like to do, and we have to talk with engineering and I guess your stormwater people also, we would like to keep the town, the pond private, so it would be an amenity to the, to the neighborhood. Of course, the HOA will have to maintain it, and until we're built out, I run the HOA, so I'd have to maintain it anyway, and we would train the people to do it, but our walking trail would walk around there. That's creating a nice little area to walk, maybe exercise. We try to make it maybe a third of a mile so that people know if they circle it three times, they've done a mile. There'll also be a walking area on the, the open area in the front, that's about an eighth of a mile, but that'll also meander on through. We are providing some off-site, off, I call it off-site, off-street parking for visitors. Each townhouse will have the ability to park four vehicles in their driveway. In other words, you can put two in the driveway, two in the garage. We, in our covenants, we are going to not allow parking on the, let's call it for argument's sake, an alley. The driveways coming in, there'll be no parking signs placed there, plus there will be against the covenants, so the covenants will not allow that. Trying to think else, we are providing, and that'll be in accordance with your emergency fire department, police department, we have to provide an access into Kensington subdivision. There is a crash gate there now, if you ride out there, there, there's actually a dirt path that takes you to that crash gate. Whatever the fire department needs in terms of that type of gate, we'd be willing to provide. We won't have that road paved unless the fire department wants, that's that little access road that comes up?
Right.
I have used in past, past projects, they call them grass pavers, and what they are is basically square pavers, about two by two, you put them in the ground, you put stone on them, and then grass will grow up through it. So it'll support a fire truck, but it'll be grass, but if the fire department wants something different, or the police department wants something different, we're not unopposed to that, we want to work with that, but it will not give access to anybody living in Danbrook to drive through. I'll have some way to, no access, emergency vehicles only sign or something to that effect. Again, whatever the fire department would like to do. There is sewer already on the right-hand side that runs down on that side, that sewer line is already in, we probably will tie into that, we've looked at doing that. We propose to add buffer along the left-hand side, which is up against Elmwood Park. We hope to keep the existing tree line that's there. If some, for some reason, those trees are thinned, or they're gone, we will have to replant whatever it is that's missing. We try to hope to keep a buffer between us and Kensington. Again, whatever trees may be gone, we may have to work that into a landscape plan, which I'd be willing to provide at a later date. And of course, on the other side, whatever we can provide to the open holly property, we would do that. We are intending to try to keep the tree line along Whiskey Road. There is a, I believe, a power easement there with some overhead lines. Again, we'll have to look at that and see how that plays into our entry. We are proposing to run sidewalks out to Whiskey Road, they eventually would tie in, maybe when Whiskey Road study or whatever they're going to do there, or if we have to run our sidewalk, whatever we need to do on that area, we will. In the park area, I hope to try, we're going to do a, a tree survey in there, if there's any really pretty trees, we'll keep them. Again, keep in mind, this is a concept plan, we want to do this design, but of course, when you start engineering things, certain things may change a little bit. I'm willing to answer any questions. I think we've given you about 41% open space of it, it's a 20-acre piece of property. I, you know, I have only information here, I'm calling it from memory.
That's what it says, 40% open and...
Yeah, that's my requirement, and then I think we've given you more than 20% as active, active space for...
Excess of 20% active and passive recreation.
All right, these units will be townhouse units, I've provided you some elevations of our ranch and our two-story condo.
Could be three-bedroom?
Summer three, summer four.
Summer four.
Yes, sir.
Between 1,600 and, was it between 1,600 square feet and 2,400 square feet?
Give or take, yeah.
Yeah, you'll find that sometimes the, the little two-stores are a little sometimes smaller.
We're trying to provide a little bit of variety for people, maybe a newly-married couple would want something a little smaller, with the potential maybe for a bedroom or two if they have a child, and then maybe someone who wants a little bit bigger unit can go to 2,400, it'd be very little maintenance in the yard, the HOA will handle a lot of, a lot of the lawn maintenances for the neighborhood.
And you are aware of that the, the planning department has talked about, is requesting that you comply with the Whiskey Road overlay district?
Yes, sir, we have no trouble with that.
Landscaping, tree preservation, I think you've done open space buffer requirements?
Yes, sir.
Additional five-foot right-of-way on each side of the cartway for roadways, is that what you were talking about? Mentioned that five-foot right-of-way?
Yeah, that was brought up to us, and I believe my engineer addressed that, we are willing to give you the five-foot right-of-way, I don't think we're, keeping the setback might have been reduced by the five feet, I mean, you can have whatever you need, that's, that's fine with us.
And there's a signage requirement also?
Yes, the entrance sign.
You're going to put a sign, you're going to put an entrance sign?
Yes, sir, I have a couple already designed. You may have seen the one I did for Somerton Village, I don't, I presented that to the Aitken City of planning people, and we have another sign for us.
And there's a 90-day approval period here, you're, you're familiar with that?
Well, the only question I have, the 90 days to comply with those, is that after this meeting or after council meeting?
It would be after a second reading by council.
It's not after this meeting, you know, we're an advisory body, so we, we make recommendations, and then you will be in front of City Council.
Yeah, we, I, like I said, we, I've seen the conditions, we're, we're okay with everything you did, I just had that question.
We're not going to start anything running until it's...
I know.
Until the approval's done and completed. And the name of it's Danbrook Village?
Yes, sir.
Where'd you come up with that name?
We made it up.
Made it up.
You'd be surprised, it's, it's coming very difficult, we have a neighborhood in Columbia County that we kind of just pulled letters out of a Scrabble box, we came up with Calari, believe it or not, and everybody asked, what is it? And I have no clue, and we made it up. It's harder to name, these things and roads are becoming more and more difficult to name, so sometimes you have to kind of make them up.
Okay, questions? Members of Planning Commission, questions?
So this space between the, the sides of the units in Elmwood Park is just going to be green space with no sidewalk down there at all?
I'm not understanding what you're saying.
On the left side?
Go point to it, or let him point to it.
Yeah, Elmwood, so behind those units, yeah.
No, we don't anticipate a sidewalk, we're just going to leave the natural buffer that's there, as much of it as possible, and if I have to replant something, if it's been thinned out for whatever reason, because sometimes that happens, we may have to plant some new trees in that area, but, no, we weren't going to run it, because you can get access along the road on the other side for those units there.
So the theory is you're going to pull in off of Whiskey?
Yes, sir.
And you're either going to take, you're going to take a right there and swing around to the backside, or you're going to go up and, and swing around, the ones in the center, your garages, are going to have to be accessed through there, right? They can't, the back of it's going to be...
The ones in the center, I'm going to go up to it again.
Yeah, go ahead, yes.
But if I'm not understanding you, these here, boy, this blur, this is a red right through here.
Right.
So if you were living in this unit, for example, you come in, you can either go to the right or to the left, and you would pull in by mine, and your house would face, your, your front entrance would face this. Now, if you're living in this unit here, you're backing in and you face that courtyard. Okay. They all have rear entry, and then this unit faces this courtyard.
So the roads, but the road is, is going to go both directions around that rectangle?
Yeah, if you want to.
Okay.
You come in and just keep circling until you figure out where you're going.
Okay, okay. I thought it would just be one, I, I just had in my mind it would just be one way around there, but I guess it doesn't matter.
Well, we did talk about that, and I think we felt it'd be better to be two-way, because if you lived over here, you had to come all the way around.
That's right.
To get out, but if you live in here to get out, and if you live here, you got to go all the way around to get to your house. So the road, I believe, is big enough to contain some two-way traffic.
Okay. Okay, questions? In your body. Okay, uh, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're not planning on leaving?
No.
Hang, hang around.
I'm going to hang around, I got to give something to Ryan anyway, so.
Hang around.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Anybody else, yes, sir, anybody else on behalf, on behalf of the application?
I just have a question.
Well, we got, yeah, I'm, I'm going to let everybody, I'm going to let anybody who wants to come up and ask questions are, are, in just a second. This is, right now, just, anybody else wants to speak on behalf of the approval and the rezoning? Okay, now, anybody else wants to speak in any way, shape, or form? Yes, sir, come on up, state your name and your address and lay it on us.
My name is Charlie Staff, I live on Surrey Park Drive, which is where my question comes about.
Okay.
There's a parcel B listed on this map that's also in the green, and I was wondering if that in any way is going to be affected by this development?
You're talking, I see it, parcel B, it's up there, how about it? I don't know, what, does anybody know the...
So the, you're talking about in, I guess that's the upper-right corner?
Upper-right corner.
Which is, which is the southeast corner of the property?
Square piece of property.
Yeah, so it's essentially being left as, this, this plan changes that to green space.
But is that included in the, in the project or not?
Correct, so it's included in this zoning, so it's included in this concept plan.
It is included, but you're not doing anything with that?
But it's, yeah, it's shown as green space on the, on the concept plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, anybody else? Yes, sir?
Bobby Hamm, from representing 102 Crestwood, the first house on Whiskey Road. I got two things. One, this one is, when we spoke about, what, six, eight months ago, we discussed that the homes here, we have a, there's a road that we use, and y'all remember, we talked about that last time when this first came up? And we was pretty much guaranteed that a little road could stay there.
Is it on your property?
It's an easement.
Is it, is it on your side of the property line, or?
I think, I think most of them, in the, in the buffer.
25, 25, 30, 40.
There's like a 25-foot buffer.
It's an easement, though, isn't it? I think it's a power easement.
I think it's a power easement, I would...
Are there power line, are there power lines that run down that road? It's a power, it's a utility.
And if you remember, the crash, the emergency gate was going to be here, right? When that, that was first opened. If you still can be able to use our road that we've been using since the 60s, I think y'all...
If, if the road is an easement, I don't know of anybody that's planning on closing it up. If it's on the prop, if it's not on your property, you know, I, I think that's, that's a questionable issue. You can't ride on somebody else's property. So, I, I can't answer the, I can't answer, because I don't know where the road is, it's not on this plat here that we're looking at.
What about Mr. Galino, does he know that?
Mr., you know anything about it, Mr. Galino? Okay, would you like to comment?
According to, let's see if I can see it from here, there's a, there's an access road that comes in about here that leads back to the trash gate. You go a little bit further, right along here is just a dirt road that actually traverses our block. How much of it's on our property, how much is it on the home's property, and we don't know exactly, but as far as the papers that when we bought it, there is no easement there, as far as we know. We looked at all that paperwork, came back when we did our title search, there is no easement as far as I know, so I don't have, you know, our intention would be to use that area as an easement.
Yeah.
Again, I don't know until I...
Have you, have you had your property surveyed? You've had your property surveyed?
Yeah.
Is there a marker out there?
Yeah, there is a right-of-way marker there.
Do you know where that marker is, Mr. Hamm?
It's a little concrete marker.
So I, I don't know what, I, I'm sitting here, I don't know where that road is in relation to that marker, but...
It's just on the other side.
It's on the other side.
It's on the other side of the dirt, it's a little dirt.
If the road's on your side of the property, I don't think, I don't think we have an issue.
If I remember correctly, that would be taken, or you'd try not to take it from us.
Well, we're not going to, we're not taking it.
But anyway, and the gentleman representing Beasley Homes, I'm not being picky here, but he used the word, he intends to leave that buffer zone. I'd like to change the word intend to require him to have the buffer zone.
He is, he is, Ryan, you can speak to that, he is required to have the buffer.
He, he said, he said we intend.
That's, that's not optional.
Okay.
Yeah, he's required to have the buffer, but as to whether or not he has to leave the road open for use, that's...
Well, the road, they said that...
Because the road doesn't show on here.
No, the road's not on here, but we've, we've had a, a statement that the, the plat that was done, there's a stop out there when that surveyor did that plat?
The concrete block.
And, and a marker, and the road is on their side of the marker.
Yeah. Under landscape, Mr. Chairman, it does say that last sentence on landscape, that landscape plan will be provided at a later date, so would that buffer be considered part of the landscape or the boundary of the property?
Yeah, so we get to, if a concept plan is approved, a developer has to submit basically a site plan, at which point we review landscaping buffers, the city engineer will review storm, stormwater calculations, the design, those sorts of things.
How far does that dirt road go? Behind all of these houses in Kensington, or just does it go behind the first three or four, or?
Elmwood Park, that's Elmwood Park.
I mean Elmwood Park.
Will this little dirt road here stop just past your house?
All right, okay. It's hard to even see it on here.
You know, not taking it, since we're being invaded, you know, we've been here since the 60s, and the dirt road is grandfathered in, is what I'm telling you. But anyway, that's just two things off.
Okay.
Well, when you get into those situations, that's, that's, that's tough issues. That's tough issues. Ms. Ma, do you want to, you want to make a statement, please step to the, and give us your name.
Hey, my name's Carol Carver, we're the fourth house in, in Elmwood Park, and the only thing that I say is when we had that bad, bad ice storm, the electric company did come down that road to restore our power. And right beyond that little road, it's not very wide, I mean, single lane.
Right.
Is a really nice buffer of trees, and so when the Beasley man said they were going to leave the buffer, I assume he's talking about leaving those trees, and if he leaves those trees, then that little road stays open for electric, the electric company to come in if we lose power again.
Makes sense.
You know, all up and down that road, that existing little road is power lines. Their, their neighborhood will be underground power lines, but we're not.
Right.
You know, the neighborhood's close to 70 years old, I would estimate, so...
Right, right, okay.
That's, that's the only concern I have, and, and of course, I would love that little buffer of trees left, just to give us some privacy.
Yeah, well, there's going to be a buffer there now.
Yeah, and he said he would try to preserve as many of the trees as possible.
And, I mean, there's some huge trees out there, like this, the trunk's this big around, right behind my house, so it would be nice if they could be left. Okay, thank you, that's all I had to say.
Okay, anybody else? Yes?
I'm Dana McQuire, I live on Reading Court in Kensington. What is the price range for these townhomes?
Uh, what, what, Mr. Julien, Julieno, what is his name?
I couldn't answer that right at this moment.
Juli, Julieno?
1,600 square foot town, a house could go from about $150, let's figure out about a hundred dollars a square foot.
And a motion, and a motion, yeah. Yeah, I mean, when you talk about, you're, you're, obviously when you're talking about 1,600 square feet, you're talking about a hundred and $50,000 range, you know, bottom line, it's not, not much way you can build it for less than that and make any money. Okay, anybody else? Questions, comments? Okay. Do we have a motion? Want to make a motion, want to suspend the rules, what do you want to do? Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve application 18-60008 and 18-22004 for rezoning concept plan approval of tax parcels 123-07-02-009 and 123-11-18-001 for Bill Beasley Homes, Inc., current zoning plan commercial to plan residential. I make the motion that we approve this to City Council with the recommendations that have been provided as possible conditions, 1 through 6.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions, discussion?
Discussion?
Yes, sir.
Should we not consider, especially on this dirt road, and where they, and I don't know where the property line, it's still not clear to me where that property line and who it belongs to, but in the stipulations and the conditions, I'd like to make sure that we have a buffer in there. And I know that it says in landscape that it'll be provided at a later date, but I'm wondering if we should not at this time include a buffer in there?
How about if we had, or added another provision? Maybe added another provision, amend of the motion, or add in another provision, that an effort be made to preserve as many of the existing large trees as possible located within that boundary between Danbrook and?
Elmwood.
Elmwood.
And Ryan, could you remind us and let them know also what would be the buffer requirements that would most likely come from that particular portion?
Right, so we, the city code requires a 10-foot buffer, and within that buffer, it does require to preserve as possible grand or significant trees for the city code, so those, those are kind of the two things we look at, at, at a perimeter landscape buffer in the PR district.
Would the buffer come from the end of the paved road that goes to the back of these driveways?
Property line. It'd be property line.
On the property line, okay.
Correct.
Because I don't know from the drawing, and maybe we can clarify, well, I take the back number, maybe somebody else can see it, what's the distance between the driveway and the green space that's on the diagram?
About 30 feet, well, it...
30, 25.
25 feet?
6, 26, 25.
The 31.2.
Okay.
Well, it's 26 in the middle, and then it enlarges down towards the end, towards Kensington, to 31.2. So it kind of widens out just a little bit, but it's at least 25 feet.
Okay.
Yeah, but what they're saying is that the, the current distance shown is at least a minimum of 26 feet and a maximum of about 31 feet between the buildings and the current lot, and the lot line owned by Beasley Builders, which is plenty of room to have a nice buffer in there.
Yes.
But they want to try to preserve as many...
And, and, well, what I read here in this buffer is that natural vegetative buffer should be maintained as much as possible along the perimeter of the development, it's already in there.
Correct.
It's already in there.
Okay.
Okay, so you, are you willing to withdraw your proposed amendment?
I didn't make it.
Okay. I thought you, I thought you wanted to amend the motion.
Just discussing.
Just discussion, discussion only, okay. All right, other questions, discussion? Okay. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Jason, since you made it, I think you probably want to...
Yeah, sorry.
All right, all opposed, like sign, okay, motion carried unanimously, it's approved. The other item... This is, huh?
When does this come before City Council?
Uh, when is it?
We'll have to check with the clerk, but it should be the next meeting, I believe, that, the next meeting is not till Aug.
It's the next, yes, City Council, not till Aug. It's the next, yes, City Council, not till Aug. All right. D is continued. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
A second? All approved. All in favor. Get it.